Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, October 8th Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. Counselors present, with the exception of Counselor Baumgartner who's on his way and Counselor Parker who has a family commitment, she can't be with us this evening. Calendar and Communications, Counselor Franco.
I attended the Fall Festival, which was really nice, there was a lot of huge turnout, and had the Beautification Committee meeting yesterday, and we were going over the input from citizens as to areas of Groton that they would like to see changes, so we're gathering information at the moment.
Very good, Counselor Heath.
No report.
Counselor Aubrey.
I enjoyed the Fall Festival too, I think to the point that I got a little too much sun, but anyways it was great, and last week I was on vacation, so life is good.
Very good, Counselor Bordelone.
I attended the Fitch High School football game versus Killingley away, unfortunately we lost, but it was, I think seventeen to twenty-one, and it was an unbelievable game right to the end, so it was worth it to go out there. I also attended the Board of Ed meeting yesterday at Central Office.
Counselor Schmidt.
No report.
Counselors of Perry.
I was out campaigning in the usual way that seems to have created a stir among some of our Republican friends, but I stopped and met a man on Lambtown Road, and he complained to me, he said, you know, Groton isn't doing much for it, they live on Lambtown Road, they have no city water, they have no city sewage, and the lighting on the road is an abomination, it's terrible. And as I rode along, I looked and I didn't see much for street lighting on Lambtown Road, and this fellow said, you know, they have city sewers and city water within a quarter of a mile of us, but they can't seem to bring it to us, why? Of course, there's no one here to answer that question right now, but I think it's a question that we should put forward to our Public Works Department.
And...
That would be the city, Groton Utilities, not our Public Works Department, in terms of extending the lines. I would reach out to Groton Utilities.
Okay.
Very good. And we are at Calendar and Communications, Counselor Baumgartner, is there anything you'd like to communicate at this point?
Nothing to report, good to see everyone.
Likewise.
Oh, Fall Festival.
Fall Festival. Very good.
And thank you Parks and Rec.
Thank the Mystic Chamber for hosting the Fall Festival, and for Parks and Rec for working with them. I attended a golf advisory board meeting, and things are going well as far as the course, revenues are up, they're doing some capital improvements, so that's very good. Had the privilege of attending the Oregon christening, which is very nice, honoring the men and women who build the submarines, as well as those who serve on the submarines, and the Safe Futures Walk to kick off Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Approval of minutes, Counselor Baumgartner, this is on page two, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes of September 24th, 2019, so moved.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Franco, is there any discussion on the minutes? Give everybody a minute to take a look. Okay, seeing no discussion, all in favor of approval of 2019-624, September 24th, 2019, how many minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously, we are eight counselors, eight in favors, zero opposed, zero abstentions. We are on to new business, and we are at 5A, 2019-613, Preliminary Results of Operations FYE 2019, unaudited, and Finance Director Landry is with us this evening, and everybody had a chance to review the audit report that was sent in the packet. Hello, thank you for coming out, and what I would like is to allow Finance Director Landry to do her report, and then we'll go to questions after she's all done presenting.
We do have preliminary results of operations as of June 30th of 2019, and I'm happy to present that it was a very positive year. If you had a chance to look at my referral, we have expenditures were under budget 1.2 million, revenues were over budget by 4.3 million, I have a couple of attachments that I just wanted to give you some of the highlights. The first one is called Comparison by Function, and that reflects the expenditures of the bottom line, you'll see the 1.2 million, and town departments returned 838,000, town operations, which includes the non-departmentals, returned 875,000, education returned 39,000, and contingency returned 248,000. So the second printout I have for you is the revenues, and I think that we all know the bulk of the revenues that came in over budget was for the additional Impact Aid that we received for a couple of prior years, but we also had some others that were quite a bit over budget. Taxes were 823,000, building permits, we had a nice little spike in that, 191,000. Interest income, as you all know, interest rates seem to go up over the past year compared to what we had budgeted last year, $465,000 in additional interest income we earned this year. The Board of Ed had a special education of 117,000, and then, as I said, the Impact Aid was $2 million that we received for two additional years. And then we also had some larger sales that brought in 537,000 of conveyance tax. As a result of the final one gives kind of a recap of where we were, where we thought we were going to be in May when we set the mill rate, and then what has ended up preliminary operations at September of 19. So we had anticipated four and a half million dollars increase to fund balance back in May when we set the mill rate, and at the time we indicated that there would be 1,095,000 that would be applied to the 20 budget. So after, now in September, when we had additional revenue coming in, we have the expenditures are a little bit where we think they're going to be at this point, it actually was the 5.5 million that's going to be increasing fund balance. So that brings us from an estimated 17% to 18% for the fund balance when compared to the 20 budget. So that's kind of my little recap, and if you have questions, hopefully I can be able to answer them for you.
Mr. Burt, did you want to add anything before we go to council questions or comments?
No.
Okay, so we'll open the floor for discussion, Counselors of Perry.
These are not final figures for the year, am I correct?
That's correct, the auditors are here, and there's always subject to the audit finding something that they may reclass, some changes that they may recommend, an expense they may move from one year to the next, so when the audit's finished in December would be the final, final numbers.
Now, how do these figures compare with the surpluses from the previous year?
Let's see, last year, I'm not sure if I have the actual surplus, well, we had 14% fund balance. Revenues over, under budget for '18 was 7.1 million, we had an ending fund balance of 18 million, which resulted in a 14% when compared to the '19 budget. So we're a little bit better this year.
And last year, what did the Education Department spend compared to their budget?
I don't think I brought the detail for '18, but I think it was pretty close to what they returned this year, it was a small amount, I don't think it was a significant amount for '18, but I apologize.
I thought we had a report a couple of months ago in our weekly status report, there was one attached, and I thought there was a significant amount of money left over, and that's why I wanted to clarify.
Oh, was that an update for, was that part of '19 that I presented?
I thought it was part of '18.
I think it was probably like a quarterly report for '19, and what happens with the Board of Ed is a timing issue, because they run their own accounts payable and their own payroll checks, and they send us what's called a warrant, so they may issue your checks, and then it gets over to us and we have to post it. So it may be something that they had checks that were dated at the end of the month, but that would fall into the following month when we posted it.
Okay.
But you're welcome.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Good to see you, Cindy.
You too.
Now, with the unassigned fund balance for this year's adopted budget, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Town Council did or did not tap into fund balance in the adopted, this past adopted budget?
For the '19 budget?
Yes.
Right, there was no fund balance applied for '19, there is some fund balance applied for '20, but not for '19.
All right, I just wanted to get that on the record. And secondly, now the revenues that come from investments, cash, cash investments, does that go directly into the fund balance?
Well, it's part of, we budget for revenue, so anything over budget would flow right into the fund balance.
Okay.
And typically, we're conservative, you know, interest rates ebb and flow, and last year they spiked quite a bit, and that's why the interest was so much more this year. But as you know, there's starting to be cuts now.
And same goes for conveyance as well?
Right, anything that's, we look at the revenue as a whole, the grand total, but if one revenue comes in under budget and another comes over budget, it's the net that would go into fund balance, and we have had a net positive for the two years, '18 and '19.
And lastly, there's a discussion item at the bottom with respect to the debt policy that was revised in 2017, would you make any recommendation to the council to maybe revisit that? It says on the language, an unassigned general fund reserve maintained in an amount equal to at least 11%, with a gradual increase to a minimum of 15% of the annual general fund expenditures. So once, I guess, when does that go into effect, it's sort of vague in that language, and I was wondering if maybe it would be appropriate if the council maybe tightened things up so that it was a little clearer that, you know, we needed to maintain the 15%, because it does say...
You mean if we were to go below the 15%? Yes, when we modified this in '17, I believe that that was added, that the council would come up with a plan should it fall below. I mean, it is a range with an ultimate goal of 15, we have had, for the past two years, we've had very good results, we all know what happened in '18, but, so we're very fortunate that where our fund balance is, at what I'm estimating it to be at 18% now, and it affords us an opportunity to look at things in the budget that possibly we were unable to do in the past, because we do have a significant fund balance, well, I hesitate to say significant, healthy fund balance, let me say that, but we also know that with the school project, we're going to be going to market for the next four years, so we have to bear that in mind if we were to start using fund balance.
Mr. Burt.
Just to add, we have a backlog of CIPs we need to catch up with too, so there'll be some extra expenditures there coming, as well as vehicles.
Thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome, thank you.
Counselor Franco, and then Aubrey.
So the education, there was education money returned, does that impact the NBR at all?
No.
It does not?
It's only the adopted budget that the state looks at. If you recall, we had to give them money in '18, and we had that little bit of like '17 for the hurricane we had to give to meet NBR.
Right. So can you explain why the Impact Aid came in for two years all at once like this?
Typically, they always lag behind, we've seen this in years past, I mean, I've looked at Impact Aid, I don't know, over 20 years, and we really are at the mercy of when they do their audits, so there's really no, we can't count on it, there have been years where we have budgeted and we've come significantly under budget, so we're really just at the mercy of when the audits are done and they finalize their numbers to determine what we should have gotten in a fiscal year. But there have been many years in the past when we've gotten maybe not a significant amount of this, but some years we've gotten like three or four very small payments for four years ago. It's very hard to budget.
And the bond agencies are requesting, well, they're advising us, for what percentage do we have in the fund balance?
The what?
The fund balance, should it be at 15, is that what the...
Most of our peers are, that's the range we picked when we went to '17, our peers are between 11 and 15.
Okay, and if we didn't set a policy to be at 15, what if we went below 15, what would they think?
Well, they look at, and when the rating agencies review what you've done, they look at what might have happened that would cause you to go below the 15, I don't know if that answers your question.
Right, so if we had set a policy at 15, and then we had to...
You mean to set a minimum of 15?
Right, the minimum at 15, and let's just say the state had an issue, and they didn't send us like enough money for the schools again.
Right, we would be able to explain that to the rating agencies, if we had a flat, we have a range, if we had a flat, we need to be at 15, that would be difficult to maintain a one number all the time.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why we try to go with the range.
So we have a range, so are we currently at 11?
Yeah, between a minimum of 11, pardon me?
Are we, we're currently at 11 as a minimum, is that correct?
That was, yes, 11, with a, a goal was 15, right, but if you remember, when we changed the policy, it was seven and three quarters.
Right.
And we had a history of using everything and just maintaining that seven and three quarters, and knowing that all of the bonding was coming and that we were going to be going to market, we made a conscious decision to try to, you know, build that up, knowing that what happened with the money that we had not anticipated to get with ECS and we did get it, that was a decision that was made to put that money into fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Aubrey, are you all right if Mr. Burt goes next?
Yeah.
Mr. Burt.
Just going to say, you know, I like having some flexibility, because there's a lot of unknowns coming in the next few years, however, I would be supportive of maybe just tweaking to 12% from 11%, so we continue to make some strides that way.
I agree, that's, I think that's a great idea. Counselor Aubrey.
Yeah, my question was on the charges for current services. You mentioned the category exceeded the budget, and it was primarily from an increase in conveyance tax. By that you mean we've had more properties conveyed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, what do you anticipate will happen when we have the change that's coming, I believe this month, in conveyance tax?
Right, where it's going to be a reduction, it really, because we were a distressed community, is that what you're referring to, we got the little bit of addition, and now that has elapsed, we'll no longer get that.
Right.
I believe that it's a half of a half of a percent. The impact is when we have very large, like over million dollar properties that sell, and that's what happened, I think we had at least two very large, maybe the ledges sold this year, I apologize, I don't know the exact ones that sold, but we would hope that unless we have large numbers, that we won't see, that won't be a significant impact to us, that little bit of that reduction in conveyance tax.
Do you know what it's going to be, the conveyance tax?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
I can get that from Betsy for you though, and email you tomorrow.
I beg your pardon.
I can get that from Betsy for you tomorrow, email you if you'd like.
That's fine.
Counselor Bordelone.
I just want to thank you, it was the first time looking at this and having this packet, it was very detailed and was easy to, user-friendly to read, and the explanations with the matching charts was very helpful. I also just wanted to say that I just think that we really should work towards pushing that fund balance up. Any year that we can move that number up is only going to prepare for the uncertain things that could come down, and so if the range is up to 15, we want to, you know, set that standard and work towards funding that appropriately so that we have it there if we need it.
Any other counselors' comments or questions for Finance Director Landry? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for the information, much appreciated.
Appreciate it.
All right, we are on 25B, authorization, 2019-620, Authorization of Capital Reserve Fund Appropriation, and I think this is Counselor Franco, correct? This is on page 15, please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the approval of a capital fund appropriation in the amount of $116,500 for a new FYE 2020 Parks and Rec project entitled Mystic Education Center Needs. Feasibility Engineering Studies with said amount to be funded as follows: $15,000 from OPDS Economic Development Marketing Budget, $15,000 from Recreation and Senior Activities Fund, and $86,500 from the Capital Reserve Fund, and to refer the matter to the RTM under Rule 6.5.3. I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heath. Good evening, gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself to the people at home, please.
Sure, Paige Brock, Economic and Community Development Manager.
Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Why don't you start off by telling us about the item, and then counselors can ask questions following.
Sure, we're going to, I think, split our presentation. The Office of Planning and Development Services is working with Parks and Rec on this particular project. I think clearly we have discussed over quite a while a number of education properties that require redevelopment. The largest one is the Mystic Education Center. We have had executive session meetings with the council to provide updates and details. Pleased to announce that last week, the developer stated that the state has actually signed the purchase and sale agreement. So we have been talking about this pivotal point in time, probably since at least the spring. The purchase and sale agreement with the state is probably the most important linchpin that allows this project to move forward. I don't, we are not prepared tonight to talk about all the details regarding the project, but the significance of that purchase and sale agreement is that the developer would like to have public outreach meetings in November. So that, that's a relief to us, we've been anxious to get this information to the public. What we have been stating all along, generically speaking, is that this is a significant project, and it's a mixed-use development in the order of $200 million. At this point in time, none of these former school properties are on the grand list, meaning we have never received tax dollars. This particular one is significant, and will be a major contributor to our grand list, which I think will be beneficial financially, but also, as I've always been saying, this is not just a real estate transaction, we're not simply selling the property, we have been teeing these projects up to be successful redevelopment projects, and sometimes it takes some time in order to facilitate that. Also, it's best described as a public-private partnership, we're not simply endorsing the sale of the property and saying, "Good luck," we're trying to assist and work with both the state and the developer to make sure that this is a project that Groton will be happy with, and it will actually be beneficial and provide some public benefit. I think to that last point, we are interested in finding out how we can get this project contributing more than simply financially. The developer, in their proposal, had stipulated they would like to convert the Pratt Recreation Building back into a public recreation venue. We were, we were very excited about that, again, this is a large-scale project, but that is one small component of it, and I don't want to speak for Mark, he can comment in a second, but I believe that Parks and Rec was very excited about it, we certainly were as well, and as a result, we started to discuss what our needs are. If we were going to go down this path, probably the easiest path would have been to say, "Fine, put a fresh coat of paint on it, and we're good to go." The problem is that building was built in the late 70s, and a lot has changed since then. We know that Groton has recreation needs, we know that we're not interested in funding all of these needs at one time, we have major capital expenditures that are occurring as priorities right now, particularly schools. So when a developer comes forward and pitches a public-private partnership and addresses the need to try to satisfy some of the community's recreation desires, it caught our attention, but we're not exactly sure what it is we want inside that property. There is a significant pool, there's gymnasium, there are two bowling alleys, racquetball court, physical therapy rooms, large auditorium. The question is, what parts of that might remain? What parts of that need to be converted into something else to satisfy modern recreation needs? The other component to that is, the building hasn't been occupied a number of years, so we want to make sure that we understand from an independent perspective, what is the current status of that building's integrity? What needs to be, what's deficient? What needs to be fixed, so that if we're going to become a partner in the future in trying to support use of that facility for public needs, we want to know all of the deficiencies upfront, so we can make sure that when the building is rehabbed to new building standards, we are addressing everything. There's no sense in doing something like this if we didn't catch all of the deficiencies. It's better to know on the front end, address it, so that we will be aware as we move forward with the project. So we view this as kind of a unique opportunity, in that there are recreation needs, it's quite costly, as we all know, to build new facilities, and the developer will be able to rehab this building basically at a fraction of the cost to build something of equal size Why we're here tonight is basically to address the needs, we have really three needs, one deals with an understanding of the community's recreation desires and needs today, 2019, understanding what is in that building today from a programmatic and functional standpoint, what elements might need to be retained and restored, what elements might need to be converted into a different use, and then the last part is the building integrity, the envelope, the flooring, windows, doors, lighting, plumbing, everything, we need to know what its condition is, and what needs to be replaced into a new standard. So without having the data from this analysis, we really would be somewhat flying blind in trying to make some decisions and some judgment calls without having the available knowledge. We are requesting, it was 116,500, I believe, that's a mere fraction of the investment that will be made by the developer, and the multimillions, and I personally believe it's, although it's a lot of money, it's short money in regards to not knowing what we need to know when we move into future discussions with the developer in trying to make some decisions. We need to know from a third-party independent what our situation is and what our needs are, so that we can be best informed.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Berry, did you want to add to that?
That was a pretty good description. But, you know, as Paige said, this is, I think for this community, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I think we have to do this strategically, and I think as Paige outlined, you know, a community-wide needs assessment is fundamental in understanding what the community wants, and how this particular building, we can best meet those needs. So that's, that's the first part of it, and that, for us to do a statistically valid survey within the department is just, it's unreasonable, we don't have the time and we don't have the staff to put together a comprehensive statistically valid survey. The second part of this is the feasibility study, so when we figure out what it is the community wants, look at the space that we have there at the Pratt Building, and we need to figure out what's going to fit in there, what won't work there, and then from there, what it's going to cost to operate, because I think it would be irresponsible for us to say, "Yeah, we want to jump in and do this," without knowing, you know, what the expenses are going to be, what the projected revenue is going to be, I think those are important parts as we make this decision. And finally, you know, is the engineering studies, you know, what we don't want to happen is, you know, we get a fresh coat of paint or a nice waxing of the building, and then we're left with something that, you know, ultimately there's issues down the road. So, you know... So, you know, the proposal, how we got to this, where we are now, is we put together an interview team, we put out an RFQ. We had five different teams bid on this. We interviewed three of them and the interview team selected what we thought was the most qualified group. And so that's, that's where we are tonight, requesting funding to pay for this consulting team to come in and do those three, do those three analyses.
Thank you very much. Counselor Zepari, then Counselor O'Brian.
Once you have the studies done, it's going to be the developer who does the modifications to the building that are necessary? Or does the town have to do the modifications to the building?
No, the developer will be doing the modifications to the building. I mean, it will be a negotiated, I don't think we're going to say we don't want a pool. Based on the, the last time the community did a needs assessment was 10 years ago. And the number-one facility that was identified was a pool and an aquatic center.
In a what center?
Aquatic.
Okay.
So, you know, lazy rivers or whatever. There's a couple of other portions to this building that we likely wouldn't eliminate. We've got, there's a large gym. There's a shortage of gyms in town. I can't imagine us saying, "No, we don't want a gym, we want something else." So there's, but there are other pieces to the building, you know, the racquetball, the, and some of the other rooms. We need to figure out what the best use of those rooms is so that we can best meet the needs of the community and also try to maximize our revenue.
The question I had concerned the developer taking on the responsibility for doing the modification. Have they put a dollar limit to the, what, the number of modifications they would make?
No, there is-
No ceiling on it?
No.
They're willing to do what we think is reasonable?
I, well, I think it would be a negotiated, you know, discussion on, you know, I think if we propose to add four stories to the building-
No.
-likely wouldn't fly, but, you know, within the existing footprint.
Well, for instance, if we wanted to take out the bowling alleys and put something else in their place, they would do that.
Yes.
If we wanted to convert the handball rackets to rooms to something else, they would do that.
Yes.
And they haven't put a ceiling on what they would be willing to spend to do that.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor O'Brian, then Franco.
When this process is completed, they would still own the building, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it would probably be in negotiations with them that we work out who's going to take care of the maintenance of some of the major items?
Yes. One of the items that I did not mention, there will be a future land development agreement. It's actually a complex legal document. Although there are agreements that are taking place, multiple agreements between the state and the developer, in the future, we will have agreements with the developer as well. And within those documents will be a number of details and maintenance, ownership, how this is going to take place, all of that is going to be worked into this large document that ultimately the town and the developer will have to agree to. And there will be some back and forth and negotiations.
But at this point, we're just talking about this building. We're not talking about the bigger-
Correct.
...agreement.
Right.
So when we, it comes time to do the negotiations, I think probably that's something that everybody's already thought about and so forth, but it's probably going to be very important as we put that wish list together, that we know that if the AC goes down, who's going to put it back up? If the heating system goes, who's going to put it back up? You know, there's some very important factors that are over and above the wish list.
Right.
So I'm kind of wondering, should we incorporate a few of those into the wish list or wait till it's negotiated later?
That'll be part of the negotiations because that's something, this is just outfitting the building and they will negotiate, you know. This is just one component of that larger piece that'll all be negotiated. And we can't even enter those negotiations without this study.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, I'm just trying to ask-
We'll make sure, yeah, we've talked about the benefits. We'll make sure it's all covered, yes.
Okay. I mean, I think it's a phenomenal opportunity and, you know, it's just, it's got to be such an addition to the town. Wonderful, wonderful for the kids and for the adults. I think a theater would be wonderful to have again, along with some of the other things that are there. I could do my comedy show.
Counselor Franco. I have a few questions. So how would this impact your budgets by taking these out of your budgets?
That would be one of the things that would be determined in the feasibility study. They would-
You mean this actual money for the transfer?
Yes.
I think that just the transfer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Like you're taking it out of this-
Yeah, we proposed to take-
The seniors-
Take it out of two different funds. The, some, out of the special revenue fund in recreation and then community development has a-
I think it was on property redevelopment funds.
Yes, property redevelopment.
And how would that impact you?
Property redevelopment?
Well, you're, if you're taking like 15,000 out of the Recreation and Senior Activities Fund, how is that going to impact-
Yeah, so that's coming out of fund balance. So the revenue that we generate when we run programs, if there's an excess, that goes into a fund balance. So we're proposing to take that out of the fund balance.
Separate from the general fund.
Separate from the general fund.
Okay.
Right. So it's not going to-
It's not going to impact?
No.
Same thing with marketing and economic development?
Yeah, it will not impact us.
Okay. And then, so the state, from what you're saying, the state has signed an agreement, a sales agreement? Does that mean that the sale is final?
No.
So then we're going to come out with possibly, you said, in November, the public relations and discussing it with the public?
Public outreach, yes.
Yes. And then what happens if there is a major outcry that people don't want this development? I'm only saying it because the Smiler's Wharf just happened in Stonington and we all saw what happened there. So what if something like that happened here?
I don't think we can avoid, there's no guarantees. In reality, moving forward, all of these projects revolve around many details. I don't think the state, the developer, or the town has approached us in thinking that it's a slam dunk, it's guaranteed. I think particularly the developer has seemed to understand that the public outreach is important. They actually attended the public outreach meeting that we had, what, two years ago or so? And they know the public want to be, wants to be engaged. They will be at that meeting, highly engaged. I think they anticipate some back and forth. I believe that most people in Groton will, at the end of the day, be supportive of this project. We can discuss details, intensity, location, buildings, et cetera, but in its entirety, I believe this is what Groton has been seeking.
So let me just ask you this. Let's just say that there's negative outcry. Why would we want to put the money up now and start these studies if we don't know what the public will think of this first? Why would we do this now in the timeline?
Because although we haven't outlined all the steps before the council tonight, I'm hoping they would trust that this is a small component of a very large picture. It's a giant puzzle. And any item that is delayed ultimately affects the entire project. And we don't want to offer any detrimental delays to the project. There are a number of parties that are involved in this and delay increases risk. Not to say that we're looking to speed this along, but if you imagine many pieces coming together and converging at one time, that's kind of where we're at at this point. And I would encourage that we move forward. It's going to take several months for this to occur and we need to get those answers. And the developer wants to be patient, however, we need to continue moving the project along. And the next step is to get it in the public, public eye. I think the consultant has a large public component as well.
Yes.
In allowing this to advance, there's ample time to get the public's input in moving things forward.
Mr. Burt wanted to say something, please.
I was going to hit on the timeline, so we hit that. But I also mentioned it's been 10 years, as Mr. Berry said, since the last study or survey was done, so that's going to be useful no matter what.
Right. The study, the survey, I don't have an issue with. I'm just questioning if we're, if there's going to be public-
Question.
If the public's going to find out about this next month, is there a reason we couldn't delay and just find out what the public feel is before we move forward with this? Just one month.
As it is, as you said, the timeline's very tight. You know, the economy changes, stock markets go bad, we want to get going. But in the first part of the project will be the survey. That survey will take longer than finding out the public reaction. So the piece that's useful no matter what will take longer than that. So we have, we can only stop the contract.
So if we start with a survey-
It'll start with a survey.
-we're not going to do the feasibility or the engineering-
You have to figure out what you want to do first, right? Am I correct that we would do the survey right off the bat?
Yeah, the survey, before you can do the feasibility study, you have to do the survey. And then the second step would be the survey. And actually, the plan was to, in tandem, run, start, do the needs assessment, but also start the engineering of the, looking at the, looking at what needs to be done in the building. And that had, that will help the developer and help in the negotiations if he's got an idea of- It will help him set a rough cost of what it's going to, you know, what it's going to take to rehab the building. It won't be the complete cost because the feasibility portion of the study is in there and figuring out what exactly the design is going to look like. That will ultimately, you know, determine the final price. But going in and saying, "Okay, we need a new roof, we need a new floor, we need to do this with the pool," that will help our negotiations with the developer, knowing that information sooner rather than later.
And did the developer request that we do this and did they ask for us to pay for this?
The developer did not request we do this. This was something that we believed was needed to protect us.
They asked us for a cost, but what are we going to face that?
Right.
Okay. And so how will this project be finalized after the public and how is this completely completed at the end? Is it a town and developer or a state and developer? And who, how is this all going to be taken care of after the public and the permits and all that? Who's finalizing it?
This component for the scope of work or are you talking about the, and all of Mystic Education Center or?
I don't know. Are they separate?
Yes.
So this property is separate from the rest of-
We're asking for 116,500 to do the feasibility analysis, community needs assessment, and engineering. I think my answer to that question would be certainly this is going to be public information that will be provided. There's the community survey, there will be individual meetings. When we get the results of all of that, the engineering, the cost estimates, that will certainly be public. The Mystic Education Center, the large project, that'll be public as well, but that's far more complicated and complex and it will require a few months to evolve.
So like the whole project itself, is that a state developer would be finalizing the whole project? When the sale's complete, everything will be done with the state?
Theirs is just the sale of the property, the LDA, the, will be between the town and the developer itself for what happens there.
Okay.
So I think the state's mostly out of it once the sale happens.
They will, for the most part, I think from this point forward, the state will not pay, play as much of an active role. The town will begin to play more of an active role. It's my understanding as well, though, that the state will be dealing with what they call a master lease agreement, which will be voted on, I think, later this month, that will address an interim period of time between this purchase and sale agreement and the actual sale of the property. Who's going to be responsible for what? That's a two-party agreement between the developer and the state. And they negotiated that over months. That was probably the largest sticking point, who's going to, who's going to be responsible for the property prior to the close. And they came up with this interim strategy. But once we're past that, it'll mainly be town and developer really trying to represent our interests in making sure that we come together for a project that's going to work well for all.
All right. Thank you. We have quite a few people that want to speak. We have Baumgartner, Bordelone, Heed, Schmidt, and then Granatowski eventually. So then we'll go back to Perry. Counselor Baumgartner, please.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. For the purposes of the public, for those who may not be well-versed in the acronyms, an LDA stands for-
Land Development Agreement.
Land Development, okay. Thank you. Now, in terms of the actual cost of the study, it's three studies in total, the community needs assessment, the feasibility study, and the engineering analysis. Is there a cost breakdown for each study? And additionally, how did you come to that number?
So I, I do have the proposal that was submitted by Greenplay. They are the principal in this. Broken Out, Greenplay, and there's a number of tasks that are identified in this. Their total was 60,000. Prairie, which is the, the architects, their fee was 26. DTC Engineering was 14,500. RRC, which is doing the statistically valid survey, was 14,500 for a total of 114,999. And we did add a component to, so that it was multilingual. So we've added, so there was an additional fee to convert the survey into, we chose Spanish as the, as the second language. So that brought the total to 116,500.
Okay. Great. And, yes, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Counselor Bordelone, then Heed, Schmidt, and Granatowski.
Thank you. So it seems like what you're saying here is there's, you know, three areas, needs, feasibility, and engineering. It also seems important to get all of these done so that we know what we're up for. But I also do also feel that before the public is even made aware of what is even going there, we're studying something that's not even public yet. Is it possible to break these needs up? Maybe the number-one thing before the needs and the feasibility, which are just as important, is actually looking at the integrity of the building and getting that engineering study done. Is it important, is it important that we move all three of these when looking at this? I mean, when you look around geographically, you can name a ton of towns where we, you put this money forward for studies and then the company's back out. So I know nothing's set in stone, but where are we at in the stakes with this? Also, we will not own the building, is that correct? That we're looking at where the pool is?
It'll be a long-term lease.
It'll be a long-term lease. And do we have numbers? We don't have numbers yet negotiated with the numbers, right? So we don't even know what we're up for, so we're, I understand there needs to be a negotiation process. And if this company was to fall under or move out, then I guess we'd have to renegotiate the lease, so we could be investing, this is a small amount on the big picture, but it's still taxpayers' dollars that we need to look at.
This is finished before we ever do a lease.
Yeah.
It's, if, this is just for the studies, you would just-
Right, I understand.
You would stop the contract where it is and pick someone else up to finish it if something happened.
And, and the right of the building. I'm just hoping that the documentation on this, it's a great asset to the town to have a building, but it would- have a building, but it would seem that it would be more cost-effective to have a place that we actually owned of our own. So I know that's a whole other figure.
Yeah, ten, fifteen million.
So, but the thought is, just, I mean, where are we at, I guess, as far as having the comfort to say that we really wanna move forward with this where nothing is officially signed or public? Those are my, my heart stops, making sure we're looking at the best interest of everybody involved in this. And, just, I don't know.
I think those are valid points.
It's just.
But I would also say, I've heard those points from all parties involved. If you think of the three parties, Groton, the state, and the developer, they're all faced with this chicken and egg situation almost daily. Before the PNS was signed, the state demanded, they executed local development agreement. We said, that's impossible. We can't provide that until the developer controls the property. The state said, well, they can't control the property 'cause the closing will take too long and we're on the hook for the maintenance and the costs. There are all of these contingencies where one party's waiting for the other to act, and it's been challenging. I think it's a valid point. However, what I have seen all three parties do is try to take that leap in moving forward. And up until last week, it was, as I said, a real challenge in that we didn't have the purchase and sale agreement. And we've been asking weekly. Now that it's done, and we're targeting November for this meeting, I, I have to say, having been involved in this for four years, we have more momentum today in trying to advance this than we ever had before. This property's been discussed for decades as something that needs to be addressed. This is probably our best opportunity to advance it. And I, I agree, we don't have all the details on the table, but that's the case for all three parties at this point in time.
And my, my last point was, if this study comes out and determines that this building is really not salvageable, in the sense of maybe it's, maybe a demolish or too much for this particular company to wanna invest, we don't know what their, their cap is, but I'm sure they have one. And we haven't had any studies, and we don't know the condition of the building since it's pretty much sat for many years. This, so this would just be, we would take, obviously, the need study, which would be helpful to the Groton Parks and Rec, but then we would be without, in the end, at the, you know, basically, the purchaser could decide what they wanna do at that point. Is that my understanding?
Mr. Burt wanted to jump in.
My understanding is that, that building was maintained until not that long ago, the state pulled out. You know, they were there and operating out of it, is that right? So I don't think, we're not expecting it to be demolished. But I did wanna make the point of, in one, you know, in a few weeks, we start the public process, but you're not gonna be done in a month. It's gonna be, for instance, the rezoning, and I think they have to do an over, new overlay zone likely for this, is that right, Paige? That's gonna take four to six months. You're not, you have to start the study now, you can't wait four to six months to get to that process. You're not gonna have the public input for a long time. It's gonna start, but you're not gonna have it for a while. And, and the engineering too. Let's say all of this project fell through, well, the engineering's still useful 'cause you'll have engineering, just like we do, you know, lead testing and asbestos surveys on buildings, we'll know what needs to be done on this building to help us with a future developer. So it's not wasting money either way.
Thank you. And we have Counsel, I'm sorry.
I would be surprised if the current developer looked at the recreation building and said, no, I don't think that's something that we wanna invest in, because from my understanding, sitting in on the proposals, the recreation building was a key component of the entire project. They're trying to build a live, work, and play community, and so the recreation building was an important part of that. So even if they had to demolish it and start over, I think, I can't speak for the developer, but I think that that would certainly be a consideration for them in trying to sell the, all the different units that they're proposing.
Okay, we have Counselors Heed, Schmidt, Granatowski, then back to Zepary and Obray.
I'll just say, I'm very supportive of this effort that you're making. It's great to finally, you know, be at the point where we can see what's going to happen. Well, although not everybody can see it, I guess. But to see that there's an endpoint is my point. So I wanted to ask, what's the timeline for the studies? Because if we're gonna start in, in a month having public input.
The three studies that we're talking about will take about four to six months.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Schmidt?
I was concerned when you said something that there's a lease agreement rather than an actual sale of the property. And I wanted to clarify that, in my mind, is the state actually selling the property or are they leasing it?
They are selling it. They're selling it to them. If we're talking about the Pratt Building, the developer would lease it to us.
I understand that, but it made it sound like the property itself was being sold, was being rented, and they would develop it.
The Pratt Building will be sold.
Right.
As well as the remainder of the property from the state to the developer.
Right. But I'm just talking about the land to the, and the Pratt Building. It's being sold to the developer.
Yes.
And if they have signed a contract, why can't it be made public?
I can't speak for the state. I believe it just happened last month.
Right.
I don't even have a copy of it yet.
Does that mean it is not a final sale?
Well, it has not been sold yet. The purchase and sale sets the process for eventually reaching the closer of the property. So until they actually close on the property, it's still in the state's ownership. I had mentioned, there are a lot of moving pieces. One of the other parts that may have been confusing, the state will have a master, master agreement with the developer for a short period of time until they get to the closing, so that the developer will control the property. We're having vandals get in, we're having mold issues in the buildings, and the developer is really concerned. Each day that goes by, these buildings are really deteriorating, and they want to get in there to control the property so it doesn't degrade any further. And the only way they can do that is if they're given site control. So that's what the state is giving to the developer right now, and they're trying to expedite the final closing on the property.
And when do they think that would be?
I don't have a timeline. I believe it'll be a few months.
A few months?
Yes. Probably, don't quote me on this, I think it probably will align quite well with, we're talking about four to six months to do this component.
Right.
Four to six months to do the zoning. I believe that this interim step, state to developer, is probably within that realm as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Obray, have you spoken on this already?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna say, I look at this as an investment on our part. You know, a hundred thousand dollars is not small potatoes, but relatively speaking, one, we're gonna have the potential for two-hundred-million-dollar development there, and we will finally be seeing tax income from that property. And it's, it's smart growth. It's, we're redeveloping a chunk of property already without having to take down any other land. So I'm, I'm really pleased with this, and I'm hoping that we can support this and consider it an investment to move the town forward in this regard. So we have Counselors Zepary and Obray, who both spoke already, who would like to speak again.
We're gonna be leasing the Pratt Building back from the developer. How long a term lease will we have?
We are, we're still negotiating that. We haven't even jumped into that discussion yet.
The thing that concerns me, God bless you. The thing that concerns me is that with ownership comes control. And if I were a developer developing a large, multi-use property, including residences for multiple families, I would like to have the recreational facility exclusively held for those families that are in my building, because it makes the property value much greater. But if the whole town has access to that prop, that building, to use the recreational facility, which I presume it will, then the benefit, the, the value of that property to the sale of those residences is probably less. So I would like to be sure, as you progress, that this is a very long-term lease, and I would like to be sure that we don't have limited access for the, the people of Groton. For instance, it will be available to the people of Groton on Saturday mornings from ten to eleven, and on Tuesdays from one to four. And the rest of the time, it's reserved for our people. I would like to have it more open to the people of Groton, and I would like to be sure that it's open for a longer period of time. Now, you're in the negotiations. I think, my own personal feeling is that even if we don't get the property access to our people, it's an advantage to the people of Groton to have this development go forward. But since we're doing a feasibility study as to what it should be used for, and that study is done through the people who live in Groton, not the people who are not yet living in that development, I presume the, the idea is to convey that it's to serve the people of Groton, that Pratt Building will be there to serve the people of Groton, and in no way be, or in no major way, be exclusively limited to the people who live in the development.
I, I was just gonna say, in no way will it be exclusive to the residents of that development. It'll be open to all residents of Groton equally, whatever the hours are, the programs, the functionality.
Once the lease expires, the owner can determine the two terms of usage. He has a right to control the property once, once the lease expires. So it's, it's one of those things that leaves us in a little offing. But nonetheless, this is a super project, and I am very strongly in favor of proceeding with it. And although I, when I first read this stuff that you'd given us to look at before the meeting, I said, what are they doing? But I have a better understanding of it now, and I am very much in favor of going forward with this.
Mr. Burt, did you wanna jump in?
Mr. Brock covered it.
All right, very good. So we have Counselors Obray, Baumgartner, and Franco.
I was just gonna mention, in the process of people putting in bids to do this, one of the things, of course, it's done, is they looked at the financial ability of the person that's putting in the bid. And the people that did put in the bids were certainly financially stable to do this project, and they know how to do this type of project. This isn't something that's probably their first adventure. And they see, obviously, the merit of having a good relationship with the town, being a new facility. And I think we're exceptionally lucky that they're interested in doing this. And so maybe we have a hundred-year lease, and at the end, a hundred years, we don't have it anymore. Well, maybe by then, we could afford another one, who knows?
You won't get reelected.
What's that?
You won't get reelected at that time.
God, I hope not. But I, I was fortunate enough to sit in and review the plans of the different people that were coming in, and we had very good ones from everybody that did come in. It was a very hard decision. I wasn't there at the very end of it, but I feel, I feel very comfortable to go forward with this project and be very thankful of the fact that this, this group that's doing it are generous enough to wanna incorporate the town's juice in the project. And, you know, I'm sure that there'll be a cooperation between the rec department and the management of the facility as to times of how it will be set up. And I, I think probably the only thing you'd run into competition on would be the pool. You know, other facilities aren't used the same way that a pool is. So, but I'm sure things like that can be worked out, 'cause what you're really looking at is, I don't think you're probably looking at, oh, maybe I could be wrong, we're probably not looking at a process where this is just gonna be open to people to go and swim all the time. It's gonna be for the high school, it's gonna be for the schools that can have the swim teams we haven't had in the past. To have our own pool for swim teams alone is a wonderful opportunity, you know? So I just see the, the benefits of it. I feel that, I had some other different feelings about it when I was reading it, but now I'm understanding it differently. And I just think that if we didn't go forward with something like this, we would be missing an enormous opportunity for this town.
The Harry Watson Pool. Andre Baumgartner, and, or Counsel Baumgartner, and then Counsel Franco, excuse me, Counsel Baumgartner.
In two thousand and sixteen, when I served in the State House, State Rep John Scott pushed forward a bill that would convey sixty-eight acres of land, deep-protected land, Department of Environmental Protection, land adjacent to the Mr. Coral School property to the town for free. I wrote in opposition and testified against it. Various conservation organizations throughout the state and locally opposed it, and it didn't pass. My question is, is that property being at all considered as part of the sale to the, to the developer?
The, the lower property will not be sold to the developer. It will remain in state control, and it will be under the control of DEEP.
No way.
Not, sorry, not to say that that is not open to the public. And we can get into more details when we do the public release of the project, but I think it's fair to say that that property is not, it's, it's, doesn't have a trail system. That's what the community desires, that's what the state desires. There may be the ability to make some off-site improvements for the public's benefit as a result of the development of the upland area, but to answer your question, it will remain in state control and ownership.
Well, because of, so that if, if that were to be the case, would the feasibility study address some, looking into whether or not there could be recreational opportunities in that adjoining property? I know it's, the focus is on the Pratt Building, but I, I do think that would be something of, of great significance, and I think that it's something that a lot of folks in town would be paying attention to and would be interested in, looking at the opportunities there.
Yeah.
Yeah, currently, the, the focus of the feasibility study would be on the Pratt Building itself.
Though the survey would be wider than that, right?
Yeah, the survey, right.
People could say trailers and trails and other things, and we could keep that in consideration.
Right.
I think DEEP has in mind kind of what they would allow and not allow through there, though I think it's kind of set. And secondly, in, in terms of the Pratt Building, I understand it, you know, the, it looks like it's going to be a lease agreement, but in the case that, you know, is, is the building going to be sold separately from the land, or is it kind of one wholesale sale of the property?
From the state to the developer?
Correct.
It's one wholesale transaction.
Okay, all right. And, and I only say that because I, I would like to align my, my remarks with Counsel Bordelone. You know, I, I think, especially when we're considering to utilize some of these spaces as, you know, to serve the public use, I, I think it's important that the public maintains some level of ownership in them. You know, considering that this has been state property, and it goes without saying, if Cindy was here, I'm sure she would agree, that in, in many ways, the, the town has been short-ended in terms of pilot payments since the state has, you know, retained ownership of it. And so, you know, I, I think, maybe long-term, that's a discussion maybe we should, ought to, you know, include our legislators on, you know, whether or not it is appropriate ultimately to, to, you know, maintain that property. And I'm not sure if there, you know, I know, I know, I'm sure there is a mixed opinion with it, even within the town, as to whether or not it's appropriated for the town to maintain that ownership. But I, I do think something, if, if it's something that is feasible, should be explored. And lastly, on the local development agreement, could you describe the steps that the town will take to, to, from, you know, negotiating an agreement to getting it signed? will take to, to, from, you know, negotiating an agreement to getting it signed? And, you know, not just the timeline, but kind of maybe three big components to that agreement?
Sure, I think that timeline will likely be shorter than the zoning process. There've been some conceptual discussions back and forth and attorneys have started to look at a framework, but it's a large document with a lot of components. We believe probably the next, and there's a lot of gaps as well that we haven't been able to fill in. I think the next significant step would be probably before the end of 2019, there'd be some initial draft that would come to the council for discussion. And then moving forward, it really depends on the council, how quickly it advances. As we've already alluded to, there are multiple components that are converging at one time. There's this study, there's the zoning, there's also the local development agreement, and there are many others that will come to light, that have to come together at one time. In terms of timeframe, I would really say fall through summer, there'll be a lot of activity, a lot of back and forth. And if there's even a single item in that land development agreement that cannot be addressed because we don't have the data, or possibly there's a dispute between two parties, it clearly won't be voted on. It won't be voted on until actually we are comfortable and both parties are satisfied. But the council actually is the one that would approve that.
Thank you.
Councillor Franco.
All right, so just wanna make sure I'm clear on this. So, basically, the state's selling the property to the developer, developer will own the property, and then the Pratt Building, we're doing the studies, the feasibility and all those things, and we're gonna give this to the developer. He's gonna do all the work, potentially like up to millions of dollars worth of work on this building. And then they would lease it to us. And in that lease agreement, however it's negotiated, would then also come back to the council for approval and we would have the final say on if we like it or not.
Yes.
That's correct. All right, so can I just ask, Councillor Baumgartner, what did you mean by retaining some type of ownership? I don't understand what you mean by that.
Was that the DEEP property?
No, of the Pratt Building.
Well, if they're gonna put millions in there, that's, that would, I don't believe it would fly, just to be straight, because they're not gonna put millions in it.
I'm not saying them, I'm saying if we were to do that.
If we're gonna put ten, fifteen million?
And through, why not? And that's why I said, you know, we, why aren't we reaching out to our state legislators, you know? I mean, there's, the state pays for recreational facilities all the time. I can't remember the last time Groton's done that.
There's already a purchase and sale agreement, so it's going to the, for the money, you could talk to the state, but it'd be up to the developer if they wanted to transfer to us.
And especially if the state is going to be making revenue off of the sale, so you'd think some of that would actually come back and stay within the town.
Councillor Franco, do you have further questions?
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify what you meant by that. Thank you.
No, do you have further questions you want to ask?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Did you want to finish up?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Councillor Bordelain.
I'm all for economic development and I feel that, you know, making sure that we provide sustainable growth in the town and building our tax base is very important. My questions were just clarifications, clarification for all of this, since you're saying the company wasn't really asking for this. We have nobody in house that can do any of these studies, is what I guess I'm assuming.
Right, correct.
Because it would make sense that if it's gonna be their building, that the engineer, they would use their engineer company since they're gonna be building to the specs and then we would do the feasibility and the need study. That's just how my brain first goes to, thinking that they would be looking at the engineering side since they're gonna be retaining the ownership of that building. That's, so that's where I'm at. The numbers aren't extremely high, once I stated before. I agree with Councillor Zepiri here in regards to the use of the building, I mean, but I also agree with Councillor Zepiri as far as having this property be developed without the use of the building is still the asset. The Pratt Building is just another bonus to this, so, but anyway.
Mr. Bird?
Well, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think there's some, there's some need for an independent study so that we can ensure we're protecting ourselves. It would almost be analogous to someone buying a house and, so they're the buyer, and the seller says, "Don't worry about the inspections for the home, I'll take care of it and I'll give you the report." You wanna make sure that you are getting an independent study representative of your interests and desires so that you can have a fully objective analysis. It's true that the developer will send their engineer in, but there are always interpretations of, you know, how far they're gonna wanna go, will something minimally satisfy versus maybe our engineer would say, "Well, that satisfies, but if you really wanna be, protect yourself long-term, I'd recommend you take it to the standard." So, I think there is some value in getting an independent perspective.
I guess my thought process was that they're ultimately the owners of the facility. So, their investment, if it was my investment, my property, I'd want my engineer to back it, even though you guys have the feasibility and the need study coming in, I would take that and then bring it to my engineer to do the engineering, since they're the owners of the building. That, to me, just makes more sense. So, I'm curious as to, have we asked if they could do the engineering part of this?
They are doing their own engineering, but we want the independent study.
Right. So, I think everybody's had a chance to speak. Are there any last-minute questions from anybody?
I just wanted to address the process thing. This does have to go through RTM and we're asking that it go through six-five-three, so it's gonna be referred and it will be taken up by the representative town meeting at their next meeting as soon as possible, so.
Assuming a committee can see it first, right?
Yeah, okay, so.
I have one more question.
Yes, Councillor Bordelain.
As a person who just came from RTM only a week ago and now is sitting up here, it's really hard to, without the full backdrop of the story that was fully talked about in executive session, as to the full development of this property, with something like this moving forward to the RTM, as informed as I think I may be, that I had to catch up with, and I'm still trying to catch up on this, and there's still some unanswered questions in my, from my perspective, I would feel it would be very hard for the RTM to vote on such thing as to, there's a lot more to this information that, to this process that we can't answer today. So, how does an RTM then take this and vote on all of this money when we are not privy, neither the public nor the RTM, to that information? So, I'm having trouble with that. So, how do we move forward with that?
First of all, I feel that a lot of the process information was relayed tonight. They should watch this whole setting. There's not honestly that much other than developer name that's left unknown. Pretty much everything's out there for the most part, other than just seeing the picture, you know, and design.
I respectfully disagree in the aspect that I feel that the, this property, we're saying it's gonna be a mixed use, nobody knows what it is, who the company is, what's going there exactly. Is it low-income housing? Is it high-end housing? Is it middle-level housing? The neighbors that live in that area need to know who's moving in there and how is that land gonna be developed? What is the runoff gonna be like? What's the environmental impact gonna be? These types of things are not presented on this form here. And so, it is very hard for me to make an educated and decision on behalf of the whole town as a former RTM member who's very informed, I watch every meeting, but there's still things that were discussed behind closed doors in executive session that aren't able to be privy outright forward today, that I still don't even have the information on. And I just find that to be very difficult and concerning that we expect a forty-two-member body of RTM members who do not have this information before them. I think that's where I'm having trouble with. You get what I'm saying? It's, it seems like the process may be a little bit broken.
I could, I could understand that and even for us, it's difficult. It would be a lot easier for us to reveal everything that we know. It would be simpler for staff, it would be simpler for everybody. So, I understand that situation. How can anybody, or even a single person in Groton, make an opinion-based judgment on this without knowing the details? I understand that. On the flip side, some of these projects are highly sensitive, they are confidential, and there are negotiations that go back and forth. And I know it's difficult for people to understand, but this isn't a normal planning process where we open it up when parties are in negotiations, until they get to a certain point in time. Opening up the project for all to see could potentially jeopardize the success of those negotiations. It's particularly true in this case, given the size of the project and also that it's state property. Not until the state actually has that purchase and sale can we really move forward. And that's where we are today. But it's always our goal to try to release as much as we can without jeopardizing the sensitivity of negotiation.
So, has it been asked for a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that some other aspects be revealed for voting purposes and use for this building so that we can make an informed decision? Or do we have the full information here? Maybe there's more that we could have to really nail, drive the point home. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I guess we could put together some kind of a fact sheet, is that, if you think that would help, because, you know, what I'm hearing from the council is the referral that went up probably didn't do a, it sounds like it didn't do a terrific job of explaining because there's a couple of counselors that said, "What is this all about?" And that seems to have changed through our presentation, so perhaps we can do a better, put together some kind of a fact sheet within the limits of what we can say and what we can't say to better inform, you know, those members of the RTM prior to the meeting.
Mr. Bird?
I just think it's important to keep in mind that this is not making a final decision on moving forward. This is just looking at getting a few pieces of the puzzle so we can see the complete picture to make an informed decision later. So, it's not the time to be talking about whether everything's out on the table, this is just a piece of the information we need.
And I trust you gentlemen will be available for the RTM committee meeting and the full RTM meeting.
Yes, we will be there. However, I'm not sure that that's the forum to download the full project. The appropriate forum to do that is the public outreach meeting, which we're trying to plan for November.
I just meant to present as you did to us this evening, because you, I think you did a very thorough job in answering our questions and all of us had, we had very many questions for you and I think you did a fine job answering them. Councillor Franco?
I would say that I think Councillor Bordelain has a point, that most of us have been in executive session and know how the big picture is and what it is. So, it makes it easier for us to, I think it would make it easier for us to vote on this and with somebody that came in that has never seen the conceptual ideas and how large a project this is, it's gonna be harder.
Sure.
To explain this to them, I think, so.
With luck. All right.
Thanks.
Again, this isn't you, anybody's saying they agree with the larger project, so.
Right, right.
Correct.
Including the RTM, yeah.
But, all right, can I just? But once again.
Councillor Bordelain?
To that point is the fact that it doesn't matter how large the project is, that small piece makes up the big picture. So, to get to that big picture, you have to vote on this and move these items, I understand that. But I understand it's not voting on the whole project or the whole big picture, but it's a huge part of it to understand that we're gonna be leasing a building eventually and what our rights might be down the road and we're doing a feasibility study and what that means. There's a lot to it, is all I'm saying.
And compared to anything we can reveal, we will, which will jeopardize in the public output session.
Yeah. Councillor Overy?
I think, I think you have to look at it, this is just a very small step in our part of it. Our part of it only pertains truly to the building that is being offered to us to be used. This has nothing to do truly with the big complex, all construction, everything that's gonna be going forward. And I don't wanna complicate it. We can't change the way the RTM is tonight. We've all been on the RTM. You can learn as much as you want or you can be as naive as you want. And nobody sitting there is gonna explain it to the point that if you haven't done some research yourself, you're gonna understand it. So, some of that responsibility goes back to the members of the RTM. But this is just a very small thing that we're doing to try to be well-informed, to be able to negotiate on what we would like to have in this particular building. We're not gonna negotiate about what goes into the rest of it because it doesn't affect us in the same way. So, if we do this and we have the information we need, then we can constructively sit there and say, "This is our wish list and if you, let's see what you can do or you can't do." But without it, how could we possibly even talk to them about it? It's as simple as that. We don't need to change the rest of the world to go forward with a small allotment of money that's gonna be very important for our part of negotiating with that particular building. Nothing else. We're not saying to the world, "Here it is, you gotta take it the way it is." We're just talking about one little building that will have an enormous effect on Groton. We'll have facilities that we don't have and we can have them at a premium. So, putting out this little bit of money is, I don't wanna complicate it. I don't wanna change the world, I wanna just work on this one thing, try to answer every question that there is that there might be at the RTM. But right now, this is our responsibility and we're not in a position to change what we're doing for the RTM tonight. We're just looking at how do we go forward to be well-informed and be in a very good position to talk with these people.
And with that, Councillor Overy, thank you very much. I think everyone has had a chance to speak multiple times, so I will call for a vote on twenty nineteen six twenty, authorization of a capital reserve fund appropriation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved, are you abstaining?
Abstaining.
So, seven in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention, and the abstention is Councillor Bordelain. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
We are on to five C, twenty nineteen six ten, Department of Transportation, easement Spicer Memorial Park, and this is on page seventeen, I believe, around Councillor Heath.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing Town Manager John Bird to sign and process paperwork necessary to Granton and Easeman at Spicer Memorial Park in the vicinity of Mosher Avenue over Amtrak Railway to the Connecticut Department of Transportation DOT as depicted on a map provided by DOT in a letter dated August twenty nineteen, I so moved.
Second. Moved by Heath and seconded by Schmidt. Mr. Bird, are you presenting this?
Apparently.
Thank you.
As it says in the background, the state of Connecticut DOT, Department of Transportation, is getting ready to rebuild the bridge over Amtrak at Mosher Avenue, that's been talked about for a while. They need a temporary easement from the town and stage their construction equipment. So, it'd be temporary, I think, if you look at the map, it looks like it's an eighty-foot by sixty-four-foot, sixty-four-foot space. They would stage their construction equipment there and at the end, they would restore the site, pay us nine hundred dollars for use of it, restore the site and plant some maple trees there, so apparently it's dangly.
Okay. So, it'll be returned to at least what it was, if not better condition?
Right.
Thank you. Councillor Zepiri?
How long are they gonna need it?
I'm not sure if I have that here.
What was your question?
He asked how long they would need it.
It goes quick.
I don't know off the top of my head, as long as it takes to finish the bridge. I'm gonna guess at least a year, but I don't know.
And they, and they planned to.
I can find it, I can have Gary reach out to them to see if they know.
They planned to put a crane platform on it?
What's that?
They planned to put a crane platform on it?
I believe you have, they'll have it for a bridge, yeah. They're gonna have to stage somewhere along there to do the bridge.
I'm just worried about this being an ugly thing that the neighbors have to put up with for an extended period of time. The railroad isn't known for its aesthetic senses.
Well, it's the DOT doing the work, though.
All right.
It's another bridge project from the state, correct?
Correct.
Well, we don't have a whole lot of information. They're gonna, obviously, they're putting some, the parts that they're gonna put on the bridge in there, I imagine. I imagine some steel beams will be going in there or what?
Counsel Zepiri, I couldn't hear what you said at the end. Please, could you repeat that?
Well, I'm wondering what they're going to put in on the property. Are they going to be storing some steel beams until they install them or what do they, what will they be using that for?
I do not have the details of what they're making the bridge of. I imagine it's going to be somewhat similar construction.
But I, I still don't have a good feeling of how much they're going to upset the neighborhood. Of course, you know, when you tear down a bridge and put another one up, it is something of a disruption in the normal neighborhood. But I, I am concerned about the people who have to look and listen to it for all of that time. Now, if we're going to have the bridge rebuilt, we have to put up with the, the construction efforts. But I, I would like to know when it will be done and when it'll, when it'll start and when it'll finish.
I'll find out more.
So we have Counsel Overy and then Baumgartner?
I was just going to make the comment that this is going to be just like a ripple in the ocean in comparison to what we're going to go through for the next five years with, when they're rebuilding the Gold Star Bridge. This will be nothing. So when you realize it's going to be five years of problems on that bridge. So I think probably the residents down there will be very happy to have a good bridge. And yes, some people will probably be a little upset, but the end result will make it safer for them.
Counsel Baumgartner and then Franco?
In the city of Groton, I serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And these surveys are very helpful in detail and do a pretty thorough job of explaining what will be done with the property. So in this box here, you'll find that it will explain how some of the construction will go and what they'll be utilizing to lay down space and sort of going over the timeline. So if you haven't gone through this document, you may have to squint a little bit, but you'll be able to, you'll be able to read it. It's in the packet.
Thank you. Counsel Franco?
So obviously, we're going to have to close this bridge. Do you know how, what length of time that could have to go around?
I'm sorry, they provided me no details. I have what you have here. So, and I anticipated someone from public works being here and they were not.
Okay, because I was just curious because I'm sure we're going to get questions from residents that would like to know these items. And another thing I would like to know is, what, what was the rating on the bridge? Do you know? Or can you find out?
I can.
Thank you. And I also noticed that on this letter, and I don't know what this, what this even means, but on page 18, it says that we were supposed to contact them at the telephone number of, no later than August 27, 2019.
Yeah, yeah, we pointed that out to the state.
So I was just curious, did we miss a deadline on anything?
No, we did not, no.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And?
That's how the state often sends stuff.
Okay. So, yeah, that was my, like, when will it be closed? Because that will be a big disruption and they'll have to go around and a major inconvenience.
Right.
And I'm just curious as to what the rating on the bridge was, the quality of it. Thank you.
So when this comes to the council, for the council adjournment?
I'll make sure you have all the answers.
Thank you very much. That's what I was going to request. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Bird that you would like to him, for him to research while he is doing this work for us? Counsel Overy?
I just thought I'd throw in something that really isn't on a yes or a no on this, but last week when I was in New Hampshire, part of Route 16 was closed. And the reason they were closing is they were putting in a slider bridge. And in New Hampshire, now, that's what they do. And it, it cuts the time down just immensely. They have three days that they, I guess, slide that bridge in and then the bridge is usable and then they do what they need to do around it. It's really a phenomenal process. I brought back some information for you, Joan, because I thought especially one in Old Mystic might be something that would work really well there.
They did those, the state did that in East Line, I think Oil Mill Road, where, on 95, where they did, they had to close the 95 for a very short period of time and they just slid the pre-fat bridge right into place.
Yeah.
That's pretty amazing.
In East Line, many years ago, they did that with the River Road Bridge.
Very nice.
Built it all off-site, then brought it in and just once it in place.
Those engineers are amazing.
We'll be looking for slider bridges in the future.
All right. Are there any more questions that you would like researched for Mr. Bird? No? Okay, seeing none. We will vote on 2019-610, Department of Transportation, Easement, Spicer Memorial Park. And this is just getting it to the council for further discussion, so you will have another opportunity to vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. That takes us to the new business. I don't believe we have any agenda items to review. So that takes us to item seven, other business. Any counselors have other business to come before us? Counsel Baumgartner?
Yeah, three items. One, where are we right now with the plastics reduction ordinance?
The Conservation Commission are meeting this week. I'm thinking, is it tomorrow night, I believe? Maybe they just, either way, they're putting together a report from the education session for the council. John Reiner will be here. Part of the next process is you voting, the council voting on individual items, including the band, if you recall that last discussion. So John will be, I'll be out of town, but John Reiner will be here to lead you through those votings. And then he'll incorporate that into the ordinance and then it's ready to go.
Okay. Great.
So that's the 22nd, the meeting on the 22nd.
The other item, I know today we discussed about fund balance and I think when we're voting on items that require tapping into the fund balance, it would, I think would be helpful to get some kind of handout or fact sheet in terms of how that would, would does affect the fund balance, its percentage, as well as the total amount, and also any other funds that are tapped, only because I think that, one, just increases transparency and it allows us to provide a greater knowledge to the public. And that, that's a minor issue, but I, I still think it would be, be a little helpful. Lastly, I know in months past, we had a discussion about responsible contractor ordinance, potentially codifying in the ordinance is some form of project labor agreement that would apply to certain building projects. As we've discussed tonight, we're, you know, we're talking about building projects of magnitude of hundreds of millions of dollars. And I think it's incredibly important that there are assurances that when we're, when we're, these building projects are taking place in town, that there is a guarantee that local workers will be valued, that there is a pipeline for employment for young people to get involved in the trades and opportunities for apprenticeship, and that while they're constructing and doing, developing these properties, that they're doing so without shortchanging the workers. They're paying them their prevailing wage, that they're, that they're compensating them properly. And so I, I think that, that should be revisited and I, I think we, we should have a more public discussion about it by getting folks coming in on both sides to talk about the merits of such a proposal. So I would like to make a referral to, to discuss the language openly in a, in a public session. That way we can talk about, you know, we, we may not agree on the language, but I think we should have the current language, but I think we should kind of go through and see what's appropriate because I, I do think we'll need something, especially as we prepare to, you know, sign off on land development agreements with, you know, large, large developers and looking to do a big, big building project. So I would like to make that referral and that way we can potentially discuss it and that we will discuss it in the next council meeting if, if appropriate. And I'd be happy to coordinate with John to, to bring folks in to talk about the ordinance, but I, I do think a public discussion, it should be warranted, given, you know, our, our discussion today.
Could you commit that to writing and just email it to me, please?
Yes.
And then I will get it to everybody and make sure we have enough people on board to go ahead with it.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Boardland?
I'm just wondering where we stand in the process of minority recruiting for town positions and minorities as far as, you know, male, female, people of all backgrounds. I think it's really important that this town reflects the demographics in which it serves. And I feel that we can do, we could do a better job. And I was wondering, where do we stand as far as our, where, where we are with our minority recruiting process for this town?
Sure. And Bob might be the better person to talk about it, but I know he's reached out to a number of agencies and sources. I will say with women, in terms of women, generally, we do very well, including the police department. But Bob, do you want to center, read on hiring?
If you could just tell everybody at home who you are and your position, that way they understand why we asked you to speak.
You're Bob Zagami, NHR.
Thank you.
Also the Assistant Town Manager. What we're trying to do now is really expand our recruiting. We've went now to career builder, zip recruiting. We've went to minority recruiting journals and we're doing career fairs, those, we're doing a number of things that we have just trying to expand, not only with that and then Indeed, the day. I mean, we're putting it out every place. The problem is, we're just talking to the public sector, other places, other municipalities. I'm sorry, I got a little thing going on my throat this week. But we've also gone to talk to private sector, public sector, other municipalities. There's a real difficulty in recruiting right now. That's why, that's why I don't think we're getting such a great effort in any position. All of our top positions, we're really having difficulty in filling them. You can see the vacancies we've had in the top. In the lower positions, I don't like to use that term, lower positions, but the clerical and such, we still get a ton of resumes for them. But in the upper level, it's difficult to get people to move from one municipality to another. And we can't just pretty much cherry pick from, from the private sector, basically. It's, we're a different kind of animal.
We are trying everything. Yeah, I talked to a number of people about minority recruiting, to try to get ideas. We went to trainings and we're trying everything that's been said and we're, we are wrestling with it, but it is a priority, so.
The, the difficulty is too, is a lot of the, I've reached out to Job Corps because I was a liaison for my former company with Job Corps. And the other difficulty is not getting responses. And we've gone to trying to get other minority agencies and not getting responses either. So is, it's, I think it's such a glut of vacancies out there. I think that's what's been part of the problem.
Counsel Zepiri?
Well, I was, I really didn't have much to say. I was just going to observe that the council has done very well for minority recruiting. There are only two white males on the council. There are, I think there are six females and there are three people of color. So I think that, you know, the council can say that we've done well with that. Additionally, I would say the people of Groton have done well with that because they've elected us all to these jobs. So I think there may be something that, you know, we don't have that much of a crisis in those areas. But I, I also would just observe that the, I, I think perhaps we ought to do some majority recruiting so that Conrad and I are the only two white males on the council.
Just, just to add to this, when Mr. Bird first started, this was one of the things that was talked about was recruiting and trying to make town staff look more like the people of Groton, so.
And the police chief and I, we don't regulate to discuss it.
Any other, other business? Seeing none. Counsel Parker is not here to move to adjourn. Is there anyone who will move to adjourn? Counsel Heed, seconded by Baumgartner. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously and we are adjourned at 8:18. Thank you and have a good evening.